All non-council employees, non-council employees, please leave the main floor of the chambers, please. Staff members that are on the floor, please leave the floor at this time. Clear the floor, please. All staff, clear the floor. Thank you.
Everyone, please take their seat. May we have quiet in the chambers. Members, please take your seats. Members, please take your seats. Quiet in the chambers. May we have quiet in the chambers. May we have quiet in the chambers and may members please take their seats and may we close the door. Thank you. Quiet in the chambers, please. Quiet in the chambers. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Roll call. Quiet in the chambers.
Adams.
Present.
Ampree Samuel.
Present.
Ayala.
Present.
Barron.
Present.
Morelli. Brannan.
Here.
Cabrera.
Here.
Chin.
Here.
Cohen. Constantinides.
Present.
Carnegie. Combo.
Present.
Deutsch.
Here.
Diaz. Drum. Gibson. Jonai. Gordenchik. Holden. King. Ku.
Present.
Kozlitz.
Here.
Lanceman. Lander. Levin.
Here.
Levine.
Here.
Mizal. Menschaka.
Present.
Miller. Moya. Perkins.
In the house.
Powers.
Here.
Reynoso.
Here.
Richards.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rose. Rosenthal.
Here.
Salamanca.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Trager.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Van Bramer.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Matteo. Speaker Johnson.
Thank you. All quiet in the chambers, please. All rise for the invocation. The invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Joseph Potaznik, the Rabbi Emeritus of Congregation Mount Sinai at 250 Cadman Plaza West in the borough of Brooklyn.
Thank you, public advocates. I was also the chaplain of the federal prison for a number of years. Thankfully, I don't see any familiar faces here from those years. Let me share one story with you, which I think has great meaning. Years ago, it was Senator Bill Bradley who was invited to speak at the Waldorf Astoria. Before he spoke, the waiter came around with a butter. And Bradley looked at him and said, "I'll have an extra pad of butter." And the waiter said to him, "Sorry, sir, we have a strict rule at the Waldorf, one pad per person." And Bradley looked at him and said, "Do you know who I am?" He said, "No, sir, who are you?" He said, "I'm a senator from New Jersey. I was floored with the New York Knicks. I went to Oxford." The guy said, "That's very impressive. Do you know who I am?" He says, "No, who are you?" He said, "I'm the guy with the butter." There is a lesson there for all of us. Whether you are the server or whether you are the senator, in our eyes, as people of faith, you are the same person. Whether you are born here or brought here, you are the same person. People who are homeless are not people who should be seen as honorless. And to those brave women who stand up and identify with Me Too, we as men need to stand with them and say, "We too stand with you too." So thus, a house of worship, as your city council, has windows. The reason for windows is what we say on the inside, we have to see on the outside. It was Martin Luther King who said years ago, "Our days of life begin to end when we are silent about things that matter." We, as clergy, you as council, we cannot afford to be silent. So we come here today belonging to our different faith traditions, but we also stand with one another, belonging to one human family. Amen.
Please be seated. Sit for a minute, they can say great things about you. Councilmember Steven Levin for the motion to spread the invocation.
Thank you very much, Madam Public Advocate. I want to welcome my friend and Rabbi, Rabbi Joseph Potaznik, who's the Rabbi Emeritus at Congregation Mount Sinai in downtown Brooklyn. You know, Rabbi Potaznik, Rabbi Area Kaplan was once asked, I'm reading this, if there are any jokes in the Talmud. And his response was, "Yes, but they're all old." Rabbi Potaznik carries on a long tradition of infusing humor into the most serious of times, into the most joyous of times. I know there are many times in my life in recent years that his humor has played a very important role in lifting me up in times of trial and provided me with joyous context in times of celebration. And I know that he has done that for many New Yorkers, whether you know him from 10/10 Wins or whether you're a member of his congregation. He has always provided New York with that light of humor and the smile that acknowledges all the great things that are around us. And so Rabbi Potaznik, I want to thank you very much for being here and for your invocation. And I would like permission to spread the motion, permission to advance the motion to spread the invocation in full upon the record, Madam Public Advocate.
So moved. And thank you, Rabbi Potaznik. Thank you so much. God bless you. Adoption of minutes?
None.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
And now, quiet in the chambers, as we now hear, at the first stated, the Speaker of the City Council, Speaker Corey Johnson.
Good afternoon, everyone. As we begin this new legislative session, I want to just say that I am very excited to work with every single one of you in serving the people of the city of New York. This Monday, we will celebrate the life and career of a man who defined the civil rights movement, Martin Luther King Jr., devoted every moment of his life to ensure that all men and women are treated equally. We continue to be inspired by Dr. King's work and will continue to fight for social justice in his honor. I want to mention that earlier this week, I was at the funeral services for Erica Garner. I was joined by my colleague here, Debbie Rose, and by my colleague Donovan Richards. And the public advocate was there as well, was the comptroller and the borough president. The Garner family has gone through so much. And Erica Garner was an activist for social justice in New York City. And I wanted to have a moment of silence for the Garner family today. If people could stand for a moment of silence.
All rise.
Thank you. If you could remain standing, I would like to recognize the recent passing of Mary Audrey Gallagher, mother of my dear friend and our dear friend and colleague, Councilmember Daniel Drum. She was a warm, loving woman who brought joy to everyone she met. Like my mom, Audrey was a P flag mom. I'm lucky to have known her. One of the last, I think, conversations that Danny had with his mom was about his new position in the council and the fact that I looked like I was going to be elected speaker. And it was actually, I think, one of the last lucid moments that she had with Danny. She was so proud of you. I remember being at the Queens Museum for your LGBT pride event this past June, seated next to her. And you know that she loved you with all of her heart. And I want to take a moment of silence for Danny and his family. Thank you. And then lastly, if we could remain standing, there have been numerous tragic fires throughout the city in the last few weeks. I know that Councilmember Levine was on the scene the other night in his district, responding to constituents for, I think, a six alarm fire in his district. And there have been other members who had to deal similarly with tragic fire incidents. I know Councilmember Torres had many fatalities in his district, the deadliest fire since Happy Land. And I want to give a moment of silence to all the victims and families and folks who have been affected by these fires. And I want to thank the men and women of the FDNY for their tremendous service. So if we could have a moment of silence as well. Thank you all very much.
Please be seated.
I want to recognize that we are joined by our colleague, Councilmember Cabrera's wonderful wife and his beautiful grandchildren, one of whom it's their first time inside of City Hall. So I want to welcome them and congratulate you and thank you for being here today. I also want to say that during the charter meeting, I think it was a week ago, during the charter meeting a week ago, when I read everyone's name and said that I wanted to work with each and every one of you, when I read Karen Kozlitz's name, I looked up and I said, "I love you, Karen." And when I looked back down, I missed Keith Powers's name. And his mom was watching from home and said, "Boy, the Speaker doesn't like you. You're the only one that he didn't mention." So I love you, Karen Kozlitz, and I love you, Keith Powers. I look forward to working with you. We're going to do good work together. And I want to right the wrong from that crazy day that I barely remember. So jumping into our docket for the day, over the past week, I've had the honor to meet with each and every one of you, each and every council member. I think I've met with every single one of you to discuss our vision for this council over the next four years. As we spoke, as we have many, many times before the last few months, to say nothing about the last four years of conversations about how to most effectively harness the charter mandated authority and power of this city council to best serve New Yorkers, one thing became abundantly clear. Our members are strong. Each and every one of our members are strong. Our members are diverse and our members are talented. New Yorkers should feel proud about that. Whether we grew up in public housing, were raised by a single parent, emigrated from another country, or left college early, our backgrounds reflect a myriad of experiences of 8.2 million people who call New York City home. And though we may come from different walks of life, the common thread that binds us together is our deep commitment to public service and our love for this city. The committees, subcommittees, and task force positions we're voting on today will help us hone in on some of the most pressing issues facing our city today. I want to announce the leadership team, which was not announced as part of the Rules Committee hearing earlier, and this will be voted on at a separate Rules Committee hearing, but I want to announce this. For our majority leader, it is going to be Majority Leader Lori Combo. For our majority whip, it is going to be Councilmember Majority Whip Fernando Cabrera. The Chair of the Democratic Conference, which is a new position, and we'll talk more about what it means, it's going to be Councilmember Robert Carnegie. We created a new position that's going to work on the council's digital strategy and communication and amplifying the council's voice, engaging people civically when it comes to social media and new media. And so Rafael Espinal is going to be Deputy Leader for Digital Communication. I am really proud that Councilmember Brad Lander, who was Deputy Leader for Policy over the last four years, is going to remain in that position. He is going to chair the Policy Working Group of the New York City Council, which we are going to reinvigorate, give staff resources to. And I'm sure Councilmember Lander, myself, and the staff are going to have conversations with members that would like to participate in it. I really want this group to be strengthened, to work on issues on a very regular basis. Councilmember Lander has taken a leading role in local progress nationally in looking at progressive policies and other forward-thinking issues that the New York City Council should tackle and that New York City should look at. And so Brad, I really look forward to serving with you in that position as Deputy Leader for Policy. I want to give my condolences to Minority Leader Steve Matteo for having to put up with me over the last week. But he is a dear friend, and I'm really, really proud that his conference decided to reelect him as Minority Leader. In this body, we have collegiality. Our friendships cross ideology and cross party lines. We respect each other even when there are significant differences when it comes to public policy. I feel that way about Steve. I feel that way about Joe. And I feel that way about Eric. I look forward to working with the Minority Leader and his entire conference on issues that matter to them in this body and issues that affect their district. So congratulations, Steve. The rest of the leadership team is going to be Councilmember Margaret Chin, Councilmember Chaim Deutsch, Councilmember Vanessa Gibson, Councilmember Karen Kozlitz, Councilmember Antonio Reynoso, Councilmember Donovan Richards, Councilmember Carlina Rivera, Councilmember Idonis Rodriguez, Councilmember Debbie Rose, Councilmember Mark Trager, Councilmember Richie Torres, Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer, and Councilmember Jumani Williams. Congratulations to each and every one of you. I look forward to serving with you and helping to lead this great body. I want to also recognize that Councilmember Menschaka, who has done an incredible job leading participatory budgeting in his own district and having the most number of people throughout the city participate in participatory budgeting in his district, he is going to serve in a new position related to expanding participatory budgeting to more districts in the city, ensuring that members get the staff support and resources that they need and for him to think more creatively about how we can engage with the Office of Management and Budget, other city agencies that work on these issues, and the body as a whole to increase participatory budgeting and to even engage more New Yorkers as he's done in his district. Maybe he can teach each one of us lessons who do PB in our own district. So I want to congratulate him on taking that role as well. I want to say that I'm inspired and thrilled to work with all of my colleagues in their new roles, and I look forward to our continued work together to make New York City stronger and more effective for all. And now I'm going to go off script. So the off-script is that, is everyone 100% happy? No. Are some people happier than others? Yes. I did my best. Over the last week, Ramon and I were here, Ramon and I were here all weekend. We met with every single member over the course of about 72 hours. We had crazy documents and spreadsheets and matrices of how to try to ensure that even if people didn't get the top thing or the second thing or the third thing, that they got something that they would be happy with. And I say this, I'm not just saying it, I'm saying, there was no level of vindictiveness towards any member of this body, for me. There was no member of vindictiveness. There was no score settling. There was no keeping track of what happened during the Speaker's race. What I said is what I meant a week ago at the charter meeting. Whether you supported me or didn't support me, whether you're a new member or a returning member, I have your back. And even if on a piece of paper, you didn't get exactly what you wanted, I am going to have the relationship with each and every one of you to be able to deliver on behalf of your districts, whether it's through the budget process, whether it's through helping out on a day-to-day basis, whether it's continuing to think creatively about other areas where the council should take a lead or should start to explore, issues that matter to individual members and to the body. And so this is not even a final document, because I want us, each one of us, to continue to have a conversation collectively and with each other about how I can continue to help each member serve their districts, serve the city of New York, and feel good about the work they're doing. Every member has my respect. I have every member's back, and I look forward to facilitating and helping every single member be successful. So for people who are disappointed, I'm sorry. Wasn't purposeful, but there will be other ways for us to work together and to be helpful. But I hope that the vast majority of people are happy and feel good, because I want to start this council off on a good foot, where everyone feels good and where we can get to work and start to have hearings and get into the preliminary budget process and do all of the things that we were elected to do for the neighborhoods across the city. So with that, I end communication from the Speaker. Thank you very much.
Discussion of general orders? Seeing none. Report of special committees?
On the report of standing committees, the report of the Committee on Rules, Prerogations and Elections, Pre-Considered Resolution 1, Council Rules and Committees.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered M6, Committee Chairs and Membership.
Coupled on general orders.
On the General Order Calendar, Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, and I'd like to ask for roll call vote on all items coupled on the General Order Calendar today.
Adams.
Aye.
Ampree Samuel.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Morelli.
Aye.
Brannan.
Yes.
Cabrera.
Yes.
Chin.
Aye.
Cohen. Constantinides.
Aye.
Carnegie.
Aye.
Combo.
Permission to explain my vote? Thank you. I rise today to recognize the tremendous opportunity that I've been given to be appointed the Majority Leader of this body is certainly something that I'm very proud to do, to represent this entire body. And I want to thank each and every member here, because so much of what I've been able to accomplish is because of you. And because of your support over this last year, as a new mom, I was able to come back in 2018 and to serve, and this is such a joyous occasion for me. And I want to thank Speaker Corey Johnson for his leadership, and I look forward to working with him closely in this position. What's so special about this, as coming as the former Chair of the Women's Issues Committee, as Majority Leader, this is going to be an incredible time to amplify what we are seeing nationwide in this body. We have an opportunity to take the Time's Up movement, the Me Too movement, and turn it into powerful legislation, as well as to make sure that our budget and financing priorities are in alignment with that. And I look forward to doing just that with this entire body. So as your Majority Leader, I look forward to continuing to do this great work. I thank Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer for his incredible service. And when he heard the rumors of potentially that I might become Majority Leader, he came over to me and wished me well and gave me that hug of support that he's going to continue to work with me to amplify the voice of the Majority Leader, but to share his experiences with me. And so I thank everyone for that. And I applaud again Speaker Corey Johnson. He's done a tremendous job at unifying the body, working around the clock in order to make sure that, at the end of the day, as he said, that good is where we're trying to get, and we shouldn't allow great to be the enemy of good, and we should continue to work together. So I thank you as your Majority Leader. I'm the first African-American woman to ever hold this position, but it's not only a matter of being the first. What really matters and what's really important is making sure that we do the first as far as budget and legislative priorities that advance women, minority communities, and those that have been disenfranchised. Thank you, and I proudly vote aye.
Deutsch.
Permission to explain?
Yes.
So I second what Councilmember Lori Combo said, except that I did not have a baby. So aye.
Diaz.
That's yes.
Drum.
Aye.
Espinal.
Aye.
Eugene.
Aye.
Gibson.
With my warmest congratulations to all of my colleagues, and certainly I want to congratulate our Speaker for his creativity and certainly leading a new Subcommittee on Capitol Budgets. I'm looking forward to working with all of you, my colleagues, to advance the priorities of our great city. And with that, I congratulate everyone, and I vote aye on all.
Jonai.
Aye.
Gordenchik.
Aye.
Holden. Kalos.
Aye.
King.
Aye on all.
Ku.
Aye.
Kozlitz. Lanceman. Lander.
Aye.
Levin. Levine.
Aye.
Mizal. Menschaka.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I vote aye on all, and I'm really happy to welcome my family, parts of my family that are here today. My sister Mary, my sister Erica, my sister Christina. There are seven of us total. And sitting next to me is Kristin Joyner, who one day maybe be on a floor somewhere representing with a lot of truth to power. Kristin is joined by her sister Caitlin and brother Troy. And so with that, I want to say thank you, not only to Speaker Corey Johnson, but the entire team that has brought forth this incredible team of fearless fighters. As the Chair of the Immigration Committee, I'm going to continue to fight, not just for immigrants, but for every New Yorker in the future. Thank you.
Welcome, Kristin.
Miller.
Voula. Aye.
Perkins.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Reynoso. Richards.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I want to thank the Speaker for the new appointment, but I also wanted to thank the staff that I worked with formerly as the Chair of the Zoning Committee, and I want to acknowledge and tell them thank you for the partnership that we had. Raju Man, Amy Levitin, Dylan Casey, Julie Lubin, Brian Paul, John Douglas, Rosie Perez, James Lloyd, Jeffrey Ewen, Margaret Griffin, Maria Salbavaro. Just wanted to say thank you, and I look forward, I'm still going to sit on zoning, look forward to continuing to work with you, but I want to thank you for your partnership over the past two years. Thank you, and I vote aye.
Thank you.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Rodriguez. Rose.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Salamanca.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I am incredibly proud to have the confidence of the Speaker and my colleagues to serve as a land use chair for the session of cities at a crossroads, including my community in the South Bronx. This body led by a Speaker who understands the importance of having a strong, independent council should be on the front lines on shaping the planning, development, and all other land use actions in a way that listens to and addresses the concerns of all New Yorkers. I believe we can and will do that. After seeing much development in my district and working to approve over 4,000 units of affordable housing in under two years, I believe that I'm ready to work with each and every member of the council to ensure the needs of their constituents are met with any given land use action. With that said, I am ready to roll my sleeves, visit as many neighborhoods as I can, and most importantly, listen on how I can help to shape land use for the five boroughs over the next four years. So let's get to work. I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Torres.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I just want to commend the Speaker, who has been as masterful and as magnanimous as he could be in the handling of his first week, and I look forward to partnering with you to set a new standard for city council oversight. It's going to be exciting. And I have a deep attachment to the Public Housing Committee. It's been, chairing the Public Housing Committee has been the most fulfilling government. Housing Committee has been the most fulfilling four years of my life, and I cannot think of a better person in whose hands that committee should be placed than Alika Samuels, who is deeply rooted in public housing, who knows it, who breathes it. So I'm looking forward to serving under your leadership of the Public Housing Committee. So with that, I said aye.
Thank you.
Traeger.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I'd like to also just echo the comments of my colleagues and to commend Speaker Corey Johnson, the outstanding staff who literally worked day and night, 24/7, to unite the body and successfully worked hard to unite this body, heard every member, heard issues in our communities. So deeply, deeply appreciate the Speaker's leadership. This is a powerful and shining example of a peaceful civil transition of power, and I think he has handled this masterfully, as my colleague Richie Torres said. I also want to just publicly thank, you know, Chair Drum, who has significantly raised the bar as Chair of Education Committee, hit on many issues that historically have not been touched upon, and he really has hit a home run in many respects. And there's a lot of work to do to catch up to your leadership, Chair Drum, but I will look to you for guidance and wisdom and your support. My condolences again on the passing of your beautiful mother, but you are a friend and colleague, and proud to call you a fellow educator. And it's great that we continue the tradition of having educators run the Education Committee. With that, I vote aye on all.
Good.
Ulrich.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Balon.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Van Bramer.
Permission to briefly explain my vote?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank Majority Leader Combo for those very kind words. I meant what I said when I went to her, when I heard the good news for her, and I'm sure she'll do a great job. But I want to say thank you to the Speaker, because what has mattered to me most over the last eight years in this body is that, number one, I chair the Cultural Affairs and Libraries Committee, the only committee I asked for when I was elected eight years ago. And because of this, I will serve my entire 12 years as the Chair of the Cultural Affairs and Libraries Committee, the only committee that I truly, really wanted when I ran for city council. But in addition, I asked Speaker Johnson to be on leadership and on the budget negotiating team, and I walk away today with all three of the things that I wanted. So I want to thank him for all of that, and with that, I proudly vote aye.
Thank you.
Williams. Jaeger.
Aye.
Mattio.
Aye.
Speaker Johnson.
I vote aye, and I also want to say, I mean, the press knows this already, but members should know this. The reason why Councilmember Williams and Rodriguez are not here today is they were arrested. I don't know what the exact charges were. I don't know exactly what happened. I was there on the scene trying to protect a very well-known immigration activist. Councilmember Lander was there. Councilmember Munchaka was there. Who am I forgetting? I think that was all of us. And there was an incident outside of Federal Plaza, coming down Broadway. So Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Lander, Councilmember Williams and, Councilmember Lander's here. Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Rodriguez were placed under arrest, and I believe that they are currently under arrest. I don't know exactly what happened, and I look forward to learning more about what happened today. I'm sure there'll be questions about it at the press conference after this, but I wanted to mention that they did not skip this meeting today. They were somewhere else. So, thank you, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. All items on today's general order calendar were adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills. None. Discussion of resolutions, there's no resolutions, and now we will begin with general discussion, beginning with Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you very much, Madam Public Advocate, and I wanted to take a very quick opportunity to certainly thank all of the members of this body for the incredible honor and privilege to have served for four years as your Chair of the Committee on Public Safety. As the first woman and the first person of color, it's nothing that I've ever forgotten about in terms of the great responsibility that I was given over the past four years. And under the leadership of our former Speaker, Melissa Margue Viverito, we set forth on an incredible, ambitious agenda of criminal justice reform, of ensuring that every New Yorker receives equal access to services. And I hope and pray that you all are proud of the work we've done over the four years, and now we are turning the Public Safety Committee over to Councilmember Donovan Richards, who I want to congratulate and wish well working with the NYPD and CCRB. And certainly I wanted to recognize the dynamic staff of the Public Safety Committee, led by Deepa Ambakar, our Senior Legislative Counsel, and my counsel Beth Gola, and our legislative aide Casey Addison, and our financial analyst Steve Reister and Laura Popper. This team has been by my side for the past four years, and certainly it was not easy, a great deal of challenge, but a great deal of reward. And I am so proud of the work we have done over the last four years. It was not easy to look at a new opportunity. I've built incredible relationships with the NYPD that certainly will not falter, but I look forward to remaining a member of the committee, working now under the leadership of our new Chair, Councilmember Donovan Richards, and I look forward to getting to work. Congratulations, Councilmember, and thank you so much.
The revised vote for today was a vote of 49 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions. And now we'll hear from Councilmember Lander.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I want to first thank the Speaker for the appointment as Deputy Leader for Policy and Chair of the Policy Working Group. That's a space last time we were able to work on the Fair Work Week legislation for retail and fast-food workers, for gig workers, for our neighborhoods, for the environment. There is so much more to do this term, and I look really forward to a productive partnership. Today, even more than that, I want to thank you for joining Ravi Ragbir and the New Sanctuary Coalition. Ravi's a longstanding activist, the founder and leader of the New Sanctuary Coalition, a real leader in immigration reform and protection, and the person who has mobilized people to bear witness at ICE for check-in hearings and detentions. It's 22 years that he has been engaged with ICE, and he's been doing regular check-ins for the last decade. There was no reason to detain him and potentially deport him today, other than the leadership that he has taken, the courageous leadership that he has taken on behalf of other immigrants in this city. I was really proud that there were four council members there standing with him today, hundreds of people out there in the street, with real respect to Councilmembers Williams and Rodriguez for their willingness to face arrest in his support and defense, with gratitude to Councilmember Munchaka and the Speaker as well. We have a lot of work to do this coming term at the city level, but boy, the relentless work to make sure this city is a sanctuary city, is a welcoming city, is not a place where peaceful and safe and law-abiding leaders risk getting swept up and detained and deported, and I'm proud to be part of a council that stands for that. So thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Last speaker is Councilmember Levine. Levin, excuse me.
Thank you very much, Madam Public Advocate. I didn't say it when I voted, but I do want to thank Speaker Johnson and council staff for having the faith in the job I've done over the last four years as Chair of the General Welfare Committee, and I want to thank you very much for your vote of confidence in assigning me to chair that committee for the next four years, and I look forward to working with all of my colleagues to ensure that those New Yorkers most in need, those that are homeless, the children that rely on city services, children that are abused and neglected, and New Yorkers who rely on public benefits, receive all of those services in the way in which they're entitled and the way in which they deserve with dignity and competence. And so thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I look forward to continuing to work over the next four years to improve the lives of many New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I apologize, Mr. Speaker. Councilmember Espinal?
I too didn't get a chance to say a few words when I voted, but I really want to give a big thank you to the Speaker for trusting in me to allow me to join the leadership team and be the Deputy Leader in Communications. I think now more than ever, we should be doing everything we can to connect New Yorkers to the work we're doing here in the city council, making them aware of all of the important work we're doing now when cities are up to the challenge of leading all of the important issues that we can't count on our federal government to do. So I look forward to serving that capacity, and also am thrilled to be the Chair of the Consumer Affairs Committee again as well, and to continue working on behalf of nightlife. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordentchik.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. Just very briefly, I want to thank the Speaker and my colleagues for their vote of confidence in me to chair the Parks Committee. In the summer of 1935, my father Nathan, of blessed memory, was walking across Crotone Park in the Bronx.
Oy vey.
It's going to take a while, Mr. Speaker, and...
He's on the clock.
I'm on the clock. And there was a parkie who asked him and his friends if any of them wound up learning to play tennis, and my father stopped and his friends kept walking. The upshot of the story, Mr. Speaker, is that my father played tennis for 62 years until he couldn't any longer at the age of 79. So I know the transformative effect that New York City parks can have, not only on the life of Nathan Gordentchik and his son Barry, but on the life of every single New Yorker. I am a native New Yorker. I grew up in Pomenock Playground, and if there wasn't two people, if there were two people, we played stickball. If there were four or six, it was basketball. In those magical moments when we had 20, it was softball. So I am here today to say thank you to everybody for your vote of confidence, and I look forward to working with everybody to make our great parks that much better. Thank you.
Councilor McCoslowitz.
Thank you. I also want to thank the Speaker for having confidence in me, and I look forward to chairing the Rules Elections. I'm trying to find out what the privileges are. Thank you very much.
Madam Public Advocate, I refer inform the Chair that we took all the privileges away last term.
Councilmember Debbie Rose.
I just want to be very brief. I was not here to give my vote of confidence, so I want to say aye on the vote for Corey Johnson as Speaker. And I want to say thank you to Corey for entrusting me with the Youth Committee Chair. I started my career in youth development, and I'm really excited to get back into that field. So thank you, Speaker Johnson, and I vote aye on his, that's my vote for Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three more speakers. Councilmember Kalos.
Affordable housing remains out of reach for New Yorkers. As the administration continues to announce progress preserving and building new housing, we watch every deal closely to ensure New Yorkers are actually getting the affordable housing we need. The Independent Budget Office has questioned whether the city is overstating, or worse, overpaying for affordable housing. I look forward to continuing to fight for affordable housing alongside our Speaker, Corey Johnson, as Chair of the Subcommittee on Planning Dispositions and Concessions by ensuring every hard-earned tax dollar is maximized to drive a hard bargain and generate significantly more affordable housing. I also plan to ensure the committee empowers communities in the planning process, that concessions throughout our city create opportunities for minority and women-owned small businesses, and I will make sure New Yorkers are getting a full return on any city land and any resources we are giving up. Thank you.
And because I don't want his mother yelling at me, Councilmember Keith Powers.
Thank you. No more yelling. I want to say first, congratulations to everybody on their new committees. Congratulations to our new Majority Leader and to the new leadership as well. Thank you to Speaker Johnson. I know it's a difficult task, but someone that you took with a lot of caution and care to make sure that people were in places where they could do really good work for their communities and for the city of New York. I once again want to express my condolences to Councilmember Drum. I know this has been a tough week for you, and all your colleagues are here to join by your side. And last, to my colleague to the left, I wanted to wish Councilmember Moya a belated birthday. He won't tell me how old he is. He just says old, but he had a birthday this past week, and I want to just wish him a belated birthday. Thank you.
Councilmember Alika Samuels.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I just want to say thank you so much for just having the faith and just believing in me, and I look forward to chairing the Public Housing Committee, and I just really look forward to working with my colleagues, because we know we have over half a million New Yorkers who are living in some very serious and disgusting conditions, and this is nothing new. And I know that my predecessor, Councilmember Torres, has worked so hard on behalf of all of those families, and I look forward to continuing your fight and making sure that our residents, our families have what they deserve. And so with that, I'm a product of public housing. Everyone knows I'm a voice for public housing. I used to work at NITIA, and we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I look forward to the challenge, and we're going to do what we have to do. So thank you.
Councilmember Combo, did you have some additional remarks?
Yes, Public Advocate. I too want to share my condolences to Councilmember Drum. I remember when I met you five years ago and I was contemplating running for office, you were managing the difficult task of meeting with potential candidates, but also visiting your mom, and I remember how special it was that you took time out to meet with me. And so I certainly appreciate that, and I certainly appreciate your mom sharing you with us over these last four years. I also want to add that, Public Advocate Letitia James, now that I have been elected as the Majority Leader, I am pleased to know that you are open to sharing your seat of power, as I've seen today. And I also want to...
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
And I also want to ask the members of the Women's Caucus to remain behind up front so that we can take a group photo following today's meeting. Thank you.
And now, closing remarks by the Speaker. Speaker Johnson.
Today's meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Stand adjourned. Say it. Stand adjourned, guys. Say, we're adjourned.
Rejourned?
Yes.
Rejourned?